Twenty one, call to me to order at four P M. As always, just remind everybody to turn off their electronic devices. There is going to be some background noise. We hear them vibrating or ringing. Um, I have a motion here that, well, first of all, ask for any additions, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Before we get into that motion. I will in the verbal record frame, I'll highlight a couple of things from the Noma as well as Nasda meetings I had. Uh, in around that time, I just didn't get back to Louise and add it on. So just be a verbal on that as well. Okay, so with that being said, uh, we don't have Counselor Jingra or Counselor Debushi with us today. So I'll just back and forth with Counselor Lake and Counselor Valance for the mover and seconder. Is that all right?
That's fine, yeah.
Counselor Valance, second by Counselor Lake. We do accept the agenda for Monday, August the twenty third, uh, as presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie. Any declarations of interest?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none. I do have a motion here then that Counselor hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting of Counselor held on Monday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, and the closed meeting of Counselor held on Monday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, is circly amended, moved by Counselor Lake, seconded by Counselor Valance. Any questions, errors, or missions of those minutes if noticed? Hearing none, call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Discussion required around the appointment of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two student counselors. Uh, Mr., is Counselor Lake going to discuss that?
Sure, I'm happy to sort of open that discussion.
Okay.
Um, so traditionally what we've done, uh, is approach the school and, uh, there's a student council at Marathon High School. And we've invited the, usually the president and vice president to be the, uh, the student counselors. Uh, one of the things that, uh, kind of fell apart in terms of COVID was we didn't run a student council last year. Uh, so my suggestion, if it, if it's okay to counsel, will be to, to let school, we start next week. Um, get, let student council get up and running because I think we'll run it again. And then, uh, make our invitations, uh, from that. So it would probably mean, uh, for the second meeting in September, having identified a couple of, uh, student counselors. That's a timeline that I think makes sense, uh, to me.
That sounds good. Administration is good with that?
Oh, yes, your worship. Traditionally, our student counselors, uh, have been sworn in, uh, the first meeting of October. So that's generally around the timeframe that, uh, we put them in place.
Good.
And maybe one question would be, uh, uh, I guess we're going to talk about whether we're in person or online. Uh, but would student counselors, uh, in terms of that council chambers create a problem in terms of numbers? Or would be, be able to incorporate them into that space physically?
So, yeah, your worship, I'll address that item as, uh, number nine C when we talk about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so thanks for that, Counselor Lake, and we'll look forward to having some student counselors, whether they're in person or virtually with us into the twenty one, twenty two season for the council. Thanks for that. Up next, we have, uh, C E O reports, his report on a piece of golf course parking lot paving, copied all members. Mr. Skorchinsky.
So the new construction of the Peninsula Golf Course Clubhouse was completed in June after last August's building fire. The town now has a one-story, fully functional and barrier-free building for use as a golf course clubhouse and cross-country ski alley. The parking lot at the facility is a combination of gravel and aggregate and must be maintained by the municipality for dust control. In seasons such as this one, where there is minimal rainfall, this maintenance is a challenge. And dust circulation from vehicles and carts leaving and entering the facility becomes problematic. With the number of construction and paving projects taking place this summer in Marathon, administration contacted Bruno's Contracting and Provo to measure and price out paving in the golf course parking lot, as well as some additional areas. Administration believes that this paving would be beneficial to the facility and complete the new construction overall. The construction limits and highlights of the project are as follows. Regrave and pave approximately nineteen hundred square meters in the parking lot. Supplying small concrete blocks along the clubhouse sidewalk ramp. This will just delineate cart path. Regrade and pave the sewage cleanout path. Excavate and pave less to full driveway washout areas, where as we saw this weekend with the heavy rain, we're washed out again. Um, these traditional areas, um, and rebuild and repack them. This work would begin on October seventh and take approximately ten to fourteen days to complete. Selecting this date towards the end of the season would cause the least amount of disruption at the course. As the parking lot would need to be closed for up to five days for health and safety reasons while construction was ongoing. During this period, to continue to allow play at the course, an alternative parking and course access plan will be developed and communicated to the public. The total bid price received from Bruno's is broken down as follows. Regrade and pave approximately nineteen hundred square meters in the parking lot, a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Regrade and pave the sewage cleanout path, seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. And excavate and pave less to full driveway washout areas, thirteen thousand dollars. With a total cost of the project being a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Administration is recommending that this amount be taken from any twenty twenty one surplus or using working capital reserves if there is no surplus to complete the project in twenty twenty one. Option to counsel, A, proceed with Peninsula Golf Course paving project as presented and enter into a contract with Bruno's Contracting. B, do not proceed at this time. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a contract with Bruno's Contracting to complete this project in October twenty twenty one.
Thank you for that report. I do have a motion here that Counselor hereby accepts the, uh, the attached report and recommendation on this, the golf course parking lot paving. And for that, the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a contract with Bruno's Contracting to complete the Peninsula Golf Course Parking Lot Paving Project at an offset limit of a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, move by Counselor Valance, second by Counselor Lake. Any questions? Counselor Lake?
Uh, yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, so first of all, I'd like to say, like, thank you to administration. I think, uh, obviously when we do paving projects, it's mobilization that is such a, drives the cost so much. So I just, it's nice to see kind of that eye on saving money and then kind of creating that synergy when stuff's going on. So I think it's a great kind of fit for what's going on in town. I also, you know, I've, I've golfed more this year than I normally do, and I got to say it's a, a great facility, and I think we need to protect the asset. I'm not sure I'd be, you know, a hundred percent in favor of just paving a golf course because it's not everybody in town that uses it. But as you look at that facility, it's dual use. It's a, you know, summer golf, winter cross-country ski. And then, as you look at the space, it's actually one of the nicer meeting areas, uh, in town as well. So I think, uh, kind of protecting that asset and creating a nicer, uh, and more usable look, uh, will help drive business there. So I'm certainly in favor of it. I think it's a good idea. The only thing that comes to mind is I remember when, as a non-golfer, uh, when that cement, um, uh, walkway around hole number three went in, around the top of the green, it actually impacted the skiers because that's, uh, a, a face that doesn't get a lot of snow and we had to put hay down. So I just wondered about making sure as we pave, uh, making sure that one, we're not impacting skier use. Or two, if there's something, uh, that they might like to see out of the project as well. So just kind of making sure we're looking at that dual use and how we're impacting, uh, that club. But other than that, I think, uh, you know, i- it's a little bit of money. But I think, given the money that went into the course and protecting that asset, it's kind of a no-brainer. So, uh, thank you to administration.
Thanks for that, Counselor Lake. Counselor Valance?
Yeah, I just pretty much is going to reiterate what Counselor Lake said. I'm going to have to ask the question first next time in order to get my question in. But really, it was just surrounding health and safety when it came to snow removal, winter, and just the user group come the winter months. Will it make it easier for snow removal? Will it make it harder? Just kind of what it looks like health and safety wise. You've already mentioned rain. What does it look like snow?
Yeah, it'll, it'll make it much easier, uh, obviously with a clearly delineated, uh, paved parking area. Um, as well as, you know, utilizing things such as the concrete blocks to define areas where people can and cannot access. Um, this will make it much easier from just, not just a maintenance perspective, but having pavement versus gravel overall makes life simpler when it comes to maintaining the facility, be it some, be it summer or in the winter.
Okay, so as, as presented by, uh, by Mr. Skorchinsky, the reality is, is it's a long-term, uh, maintenance, less maintenance around the golf course parking lot, as well as the shouldering that's getting it improved, uh, as we see. So there's, there's time, money, and effort spent in each time that there's a, there's rain and, and it deteriorates the shoulders as well as the parking lot. So it's going to be beneficial not only to the maintenance aspect and the savings of dollars down the road, but the aesthetics are right, Counselor Lake. It's going to be much more aesthetically pleasing, and it's money well spent to protect your asset, for sure. Counselor Valance?
It will for sure book and the project very nicely, that's for sure. Uh, we, just other questions regarding the development up at the golf course right quick. The patio, uh, there was discussions regarding potentially removing trees. Will that still be happening? And will that happen before the paving, after the paving?
Well, yes, well, yeah, so we're, we're going to be doing some tree work. Um, it's likely we're going to be doing some de-limming as opposed to removal of trees. Um, but that will happen when the course is closed. Uh, it's actually much easier to take down trees when there's no leaves on them. So that's likely a late October, November project.
Okay, Counselor Lake?
Uh, since we're asking questions about the, uh, the course, the other thing, um, you know, having been out there, I do wonder about ultimately, uh, is it possible to look at covering that patio? I just think, uh, you know, open to the elements, um, it certainly limits the number of times people can go out there. I'm not sure if administrations looked at that or if that is a, like, just is too expensive. Uh, but that was the other thing, having been out there, I thought about.
Yeah, we, there, there are products that are available. Uh, we haven't done any significant amount of research work. Um, only because, you know, we wanted to ensure the, the facility was, you know, up and operating on budget, um, as approved by council. Um, so we, we will look at that going forward. Um, you know, obviously if we looked at, um, and, and they're not permanent solutions. Uh, there are retractable solutions that are available. Um, you know, that facility could be certainly used, uh, you know, you know, from a broader use perspective in all seasons. So, uh, we plan to, to research that. I'm not sure if we'll, we'll have it for the twenty twenty two budget, um, but, but it is on our radar.
So just a quick comment now, Counselor Lake, I spent two different events out there, plus I visited, uh, with Counselor Valance one day just to check out the patio. And, yeah, there, there was one trees, as Mr. Kriti's identified, some, some trimming will, will be an asset. The other two times, the patio was wonderful, and we've had some nice weather this year, but that's just reality of Marathon. Uh, the Barrick one was a little frustrating for our visiting friends from Barrick because the bugs came out at about ten. So, and about, you can't do anything about the bugs, and they came out in full force. So we did have fly dope we could share with them, but other than that, it was, uh, it was, uh, very detrimental to them. But fine for us because we're used to the bugs as they come out, and they were gone in twenty minutes, half an hour, but it was that time that you can't. So, but it is a very, very good facility, and there's just a little bit of tweaking, and it's, it was a nice evening, uh, all three times I sat on the patio deck, so. It's great. Okay, so with all that being said, I think we were good that the, the dollars will come, uh, through surplus, if any, in twenty twenty one. If not, working capital for the, the cost, uh, of this project. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have report on municipal policing and community safety plan. Mr. Skorchinsky.
All right, so this report probably could have been ten pages. I tried to keep it to two. So the town of Marathon is currently in a section ten policing contract with the Ontario Provincial Police. The Community Safety and Policing Act two thousand and nineteen is currently moving through the regulatory process and set to come into force in twenty twenty two. Under this new act, section ten contracts will be eliminated, and a new structure of policing oversight will come into effect. Under the act, OPP detachment boards will be established. Under the act, detachment boards are responsible for undertaking the following. Consult with the commissioner and otherwise participate in the selection of the detachment commander. Determine objectives and priorities for the detachment, not inconsistent with the strategic plan prepared by the minister after consultation with the detachment commander. Advise the commander with respect to policing that is provided by the detachment. Monitor the performance of the commander himself or herself. Review reports from the detachment commander regarding policing that is provided by the detachment. Provide an annual report to the municipalities and, uh, ban councils regarding policing provided. Consider any community safety and wellbeing plan adopted by municipality or First Nation that receives policing from the detachment, of which obviously we're working with our municipal neighbors, uh, on that right now. And that'll come to council, uh, towards the end of the year for approval. The act requires that there be an OPP detachment board for every attachment of the OPP, but it is not mandatory for every municipality or First Nation in the area to participate on the board. Regardless of whether a municipality or First Nation chooses to participate, the decisions made by the detachment board will affect the entire area for which the board is responsible. The town of Marathon must determine its proposed level of participation in the new board structure at this time and submit this as a proposal to the Ministry of the Solicitor General. Attached to this report is a detailed supplemental question and answer sheet that was published, uh, by the Solicitor General in June twenty twenty one. Administration has been in consultation with the Ministry of the Solicitor General and has indicated that Marathon submission would be forthcoming after today's regular meeting of council. Administration has also been in discussion with the OPP regarding contract policing. And our section ten contract will be extended through to December thirty first, twenty twenty two, as it is set to expire at the end of this year. Once the new act receives royal assent, the section ten contract will become null and void. Costs associated with the new detachment boards will be the responsibility of municipalities within the detachment area and will depend on local decisions with respect to running the board. Uh, it's, it's ultimately too difficult at this point to determine what those costs will be. Uh, but items might include things like training and travel, uh, for board members. And your administration represents this report for council's information and direction.
Thank you for that report. Uh, this is a very lengthy process, and it's been ongoing for a couple of years. Uh, there's, uh, there's some support out there for, through the municipal, uh, uh, boards that we have existing in zones. There's also some, uh, some, some negativity towards this new plan. It, it seems like as, as Mr. Skorchinsky read off in, in the, uh, the discussion page, you know, about the role of a board today. We do most of those things, uh, right now as a board for our community. But with the incorporation of now, it will be mandatory, probably in our, in our catchment, uh, board, which they already are under the five-one section. Just they don't have an actual board. Why? I don't know, but because they were never under contract prior to nineteen ninety-four when we went to contract. Then it'll also incorporating our First Nations neighbors. So, uh, I'm not too sure if it's in, if it's in catching the Morbert ban, but it's definitely in catching the Pick River, uh, Bitigonishnabe ban. Uh, so there's a lot of work to be done from now till this gets royal assent and approvals from all the, the, the associations. And the reality is, we don't know what it's going to look like at the end of the day because we have a contract right now, so we have a contract policing, we pay a fee based on a call for service and the service provided. Going forward after this, this decision is made in the community safety plan and all the changes have been, and royal assent's been given, and next year, what does it look like then? None of us know that. I've been trained on three or four different scenarios between the Ontario Association Police Service Boards, as well as the Solicitor General's office, uh, over my fifteen years as chair of the police services board. So there's been nobody consistently trained as police service board members through the province. So maybe they're trying to get that road as done, but they're having a hell of a time, uh, filling, uh, appointments from provincial appointments. This has been an ongoing problem for the whole time I've been the chair of the police service board. We still sit with only two members right now. So we don't have a provincial appointment. I brought it to the ministers' attention on numerous occasions. The commissioner's attention on numerous occasions, and yet still nothing's changed. So I don't know if all this work is going to benefit the communities when we can just go to a straight community safety plan, work with our different agencies within the community, and know who can go where, when, and why. When you're in trouble, who do you talk to? Where do you go to for help? You know, the two-on-ones, the, the shelter homes, the victim services, those type of things. Get them into a situation table, which we already have, uh, like a hub, and, and work through that system. So this is, this is interesting, and, and Mrs. Skorchinsky's working with the three municipalities trying to coordinate this, uh, right now, and giving the information back to the Soul Jen's office, but, yeah, it's, it's going to be an interesting process and what it looks like at the end of the day. Uh, it's anybody's guess. Counselor Lake?
Uh, thanks, your worship, and, and certainly, uh, I, you are the expert on police services board on this council, you have been in it so long. So I won't talk, uh, about any of kind of how it works, but I would say, given that we don't know what it looks like, I would say, what are our principles? And I guess when I think about, you know, what I'd like to see as a counselor would be, the two principles would be, one, you know, how many meetings did you go to over the years trying to get our police costing down? I would say that was one of the great victories for this particular council, to get our policing back even with other municipalities. So I would not want to lose that, uh, as part of moving forward. And two, uh, we've always said we want community representation on decision-making, uh, for our policing. So as long as those two principles are maintained for me, where our mayor is sitting on whatever board this is, so that the community is having direct conversation with, uh, our detachment commander and that our costs are not going up, then I'd say we've met the principles that, that, that I, I really care about, right? Like that local control and then watching the, uh, the dollars. Um, so as long as we get there, I guess those are the principles I'd like to see maintained.
Thanks for that, Counselor Lake. So there's a point number two, determining objectives and priorities of the detachment, not inconsistent with the strategic plan prepared by the minister. That's already happening. We, we, we talked to our detachment commander, we talked about policing in our community. We get like the foot patrol, bike patrol so much, so, well, we really have no control. Arulia still controls the OPP, then it goes to Thunder Bay Regional, and the, the regional command gives orders to the detachments under their watch, period. So they have a, they have a, a, a system, and that's the system. So as a community leader and on the board, you know, we really don't have much direction as far as police services in our community. We can give, uh, you know, information and talk to our detachment commander and their specific items. You know, right now, we're having a lot of bear problems, right? So, you know, those are, those are things we can, let's focus a little bit on that, a little bit of focus on a little bit of, uh, B and Es or something happen to communities, some higher drug use. Yes, but it's still directed from Arulia and then Regional and Thunder Bay. So I don't see how this is all going to change, but then, then maybe I'm, maybe I'm got blinders on right now, so I don't know. Maybe Mr. Skorchinsky can add on to that.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't have a, a lot of counsel for counsel at this point, other than, um, why I wanted to bring this forward today is I think it's important. We put our, we, our proposal forward, which is more or less going to say, we do intend to participate on the board as a local municipality. I don't think that honestly this is going to work extremely well or, or as they envision. Um, but what we need to say is that, you know, we, you know, expect to participate because if you don't, then, you know, you don't participate in the local decision-making. So at this point, that's what I would suggest our, our proposal say, that, you know, we intend to participate and appoint a member from council to sit on the board when it's ultimately established.
Well, for sure, and I think the way they make up right now, from my understanding from our last zone meeting, was that based on Marathon having the detachment, uh, and it does, uh, supervise the mandatory policing right now. And with the incorporating of the First Nations communities, we already provide assistance for the initial Abic police, but it'll probably be more, uh, hands-on from the police, policing perspective from the community leaders and, and our Bitigon and our First Nation neighbors to say what they'd like to see from the OPP. But I don't know where the initial Abic police is going to fall into this, uh, you know, community safety plan and this policing plan going forward. So those are a lot of answers that we don't have out there. We don't know yet until we can get more updates ourselves. And again, our AGMs have been virtual, and it's not quite the same. You're not networking with commissioners and all that. And I know one, one good asset is we now, our new regional command is Brian McKillop out of Thunder Bay. So Brian served in Marathon, so he understands Marathon and the area, so that will be an asset. I talked to Brian a couple of times since, uh, he's been appointed, uh, so it, it's, it's, it's an asset. So he has a better understanding for, from, from a policing point of view, being a police officer in Marathon for many years, and then going through the ranks and through Arulia, and then back down into Regional Command at Thunder Bay, Thunder Bay Region, so, good for us. So this report is, as Mr. Skorchinsky said, we'll pass it on, say we're going to participate in the process, obviously, and, and go from there. So move by Counselor Lake, second by Counselor Valance, and we're all in favor of this report and moving forward.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Carrie.
Your worship, there should be two motions, two separate motions.
Second one, there's a second one as well. Yeah. So the second motion here is that Counselor hereby accepts the attached report on municipal policing and further that the administration hereby authorized to enter into discussions with the OPP regarding extending the town of Marathon's section ten, section ten contract through December thirty first, twenty two. Move by Counselor, that was, uh, Counselor Valance, second by Counselor Lake. Any questions on that? Hearing none, call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Okay, up next, we have a discussion required, return, returning to in-person council meetings. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Uh, so administration wanted to bring this forward for council's note today. Um, we're recommending we move back to in-person council meetings come September, uh, given, uh, two things. One is our vaccination rates, uh, obviously amongst council and administration, um, as well as our ability to utilize our large council space, uh, and create distancing. Um, we don't believe that masks would be required because of that. Um, and what we would intend to do at this point is, uh, not allow the public into council chambers, and we review that on a month-by-month basis. Um, but we would obviously broadcast, uh, council meetings, uh, through our, our technology platforms, including Teams, uh, as well as Facebook, uh, so the public can take them in. Um, but at least this way, uh, we're in person again, uh, when we're having our council meetings, having discussions and making decisions. Um, utilizing technology to bring it to the public. And then ultimately, as we, you know, hopefully see our vaccination rates continue to rise here in Marathon. I believe last I looked, uh, we were in the seventies, that, uh, we can look towards the end of the year, if not, uh, early in twenty twenty two to allow the public back into council chambers.
Okay, I think that's appropriate. Any questions, Mr. Skorchinsky, Mr. Counselor Lake?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, I'm just wondering about the, one of the things that I've always really liked about council is, obviously, it's nice to have the public there. To be honest, we don't often get a lot of public, so that, that's not a huge loss. But I, I've always liked the delegations, uh, as a, as a avenue for the public to speak. Is there a way to either, you know, include them in in-person delegations, uh, space-wise, or that they could use the kind of video feed like we have now to make a delegation to council? Just because I think that opportunity to, to speak directly is a, is kind of, is one of the great things that we do as a, as a council.
Yeah, I think, uh, certainly delegations, uh, you know, can continue electronically. Uh, we actually have our new Dell Smart Board, uh, set up within council chambers. Um, it's a pretty slick piece of technology. Uh, so we, we can do that virtually. Um, and I, you know, I see no reason, you know, like I said, you know, as long as we continue to, to, you know, move our vaccination levels forward. Um, you know, we could hold one-off delegations in person where an individual would come in and present for their ten minutes, uh, answer any questions from council, and then leave council chambers. So I would suggest we start with September, uh, council and administration only, um, in the chambers, and we move forward through the fall, uh, and progress that way.
Okay, so, so I appreciate that for sure, and I think that's a, is a good step forward. And, uh, and I, I know Marathon's done well with the vaccination, but I just want to encourage, you know, all the residents out there who haven't been vaccinated yet to, to step up and talk to your healthcare provider and, and get an understanding of what the benefits are for the vaccination for you and your, your loved ones and children, uh, twelve and over. Uh, I think it's going to be beneficial for all of us. Uh, the reality is that, uh, as Counselor Valance will attest to, has been our, our Thunder Bay District Health Board member, that, uh, the numbers are very low. They stop reporting to us on days there's no numbers at all. And the reporting's been very minimal with one, maybe two, but mostly ones. We have stopped our ECG meetings, which is our emergency control group, uh, just for now until, because things have really quieted down. So things are really positive in our community. So as soon as things change, uh, we'll be back on our, our regular meetings with administration staff, uh, so that, uh, we can make, have a clear understanding of what's going on. But I thank all the members in the community for getting that and getting those numbers highly vaccinated. But I encourage anybody who hasn't been vaccinated yet to at least talk to somebody and get an understanding. And maybe there's some opportunities to get vaccinated in the near term and get our numbers up, maybe even higher than eighty or, or even better, a hundred percent would be awesome. But let's, let's work on that. So Counselor Lake?
Uh, thank you, your worship, and I can't, yeah, I think that, that point is, uh, probably the most important one, that the only way we're getting out of this is if everybody's vaccinated. But I did have a, just, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think through the scenario in my head as I thought about going back in person, which I'm very excited about. Uh, but, uh, I, I know at like work, if, if, if I were to get a cold or, uh, have a cough, even if it's not COVID-related, I certainly can't go into work because of, uh, of, of having possible symptoms. Would a counselor experiencing something like that still be able to, uh, virtually attend a meeting with we, with that new Smart Board? Is that something we could accommodate, or, uh, is it kind of like, uh, you would just miss that meeting? I guess that, that was my, my one question.
No, that, that is a great question. So, so absolutely not. So obviously, yes, you need to complete your cell screening before you come to the council meeting. So if you have symptoms, you need to stay home, um, and utilizing that, you know, that's why administration is suggesting we also utilize Teams continuing, um, utilizing the Smart Board, our surfaces that counselor could attend from home virtually, which is allowable under our bylaw, uh, and the amendment to the Municipal Act.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Right, and good point, not only for the COVID, but other related, uh, things. Your way for a month on vacay, whatever that might look like. You can still chime in and be present at a council meeting, working through administration. So it's, it's a wonderful tool. We had some really roadblocks in the past with, with the technology, but I think now through the COVID has allowed the technology to really shine and understand that we can all do it. Even a non-techy guy like us, uh, well, I speak for myself, has, has really got a good grip on the technology and understanding how to work through it. So it's, it's a wonderful tool, so let's continue utilizing it as a great tool for our, our community and to, to, uh, be, uh, present at every meeting if we possibly can. Okay, great. Thanks for the update and, uh, looking forward to that. Um, also, uh, next I have a check run, uh, motion here for the, uh, Counselor, uh, Lake. Move by, uh, Counsel Lake, second by Counsel Valance for the check run. And this is, uh, accounts payable in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, ninety-five cents, and payroll in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Kerry, thank you. I don't think there's any questions or on, uh, those check runs. Didn't see no hands. Thank you. Okay, up next we have, uh, our verbal reports on the, uh, the AMO conference. I'll give a quick update on, on my stuff in regards to the NOMA. And then AMO. So no, my, don't mind me. I had everything on my big screen, but my big screen cast out, so I'm looking on my phone for some of the notes I wrote down here. So Noma, of course, presented to the ministers at our board meeting, uh, uh, pre, pre, uh, um, AMO conference. And we talked about some key items. It was a very interesting meeting, I'd say the least. So, uh, we talked about conservation land tax incentive programs, uh, because, uh, not so much Marathon area, but in, in our Noma catchment, there are areas of conservation land tax. Sorry, conservation lands that are not taxable. So municipalities will get, you know. Three, four hundred acres of, or maybe bigger, taken out of their municipalities, uh, opportunity to, to, uh, develop. So there, there's looking at some sort of incentive for that. We didn't talk about the unfunding. We need some sense of security. It's a five hundred million dollar fund. It's not equitable for all municipalities, some winners, some losers. We've lost some monies over the years at the nineties percent plus ten. Uh, it's a, it's a, we, we just asked the minister of finance, uh, to make sure that it's sustainable. And it's fair and equitable, and we don't lose money based on the haves and have-nots, because there's a lot of that going on. We believe in it, but they're not, they're not going to say. It is or isn't. So, uh, that was discussed again. We want to make sure that that's, that fund is there. Sale of crown land within municipal boundaries was a key point. For example, Marathon has a twenty kilometer radius of a, of a municipal boundary, but it's all crown land. We have the municipality proper down here in town, but the surrounding area around us, uh, is all crown land. So anything we gotta go through? Well, uh, Mark Vermette sent back to the board, Mark's the CEO in Red Lake, uh, the list of items you must follow through to take a purchase of a piece of crown land. Wow, let me tell you, want to talk about red? So we brought that to the minister's attention. They weren't very happy. There's a huge amount of red tape just to buy us property within your municipal boundaries, let alone something outside those boundaries. And I'm not talking about constellation and our First Nation neighbors. That's, will always take place and we'll work with that. It's about all the other things that you have to go through to pu- purchase a piece of land. Uh, payment in lieu of taxes. Again, this is a, a heads in bed scenario, the hospitals, the universities. It hasn't increased since ninety-eight seven. Let's take it off the agenda, stop talking about it. Then we talked a bit about the, uh, the overall COVID, uh, impact and pertaining to the municipalities. Uh, how that was looking, whether kind of funding, but I was saying earlier before our meeting went on air. About the amount of debt that the provincial and federal governments have gotten into. So. Like, we can't just continuing piling on debt. So that's, that's a discussion that's going to take place and whatever happens next year in the provincial election. What's going to happen next month in the federal election is going to be very interesting. Then another big thing for all of us was municipal insurance. Marathon's insurance went up some thirty-nine percent. Some municipalities went up fifty, sixty percent. We've had some claims. Other municipalities have had no claims. So that's a huge impact for all of us. That was Noma's, uh, meeting with the, uh, ministry and resource sharing. We touched a bit on that. Then Minister Rickford got a little upset, so we, we kind of put that off. We'll discuss that more. Resource sharing is basically, you know, uh, we, we have a mine in our backyard and if it wasn't in our boundaries, we wouldn't get taxed on it. We have the Exterritorial Tax Act, so it's good. But a lot of mines and forestry sectors. And forestry harvesting areas are not within municipal boundaries. So those resources all go to the province. They say they give it back through the unfunding and sharing, but no, that's not part of the resource. But then our. Our First Nation neighbors have been, have been also battling that as well. Um, then I did thank Minister Rickford personally on the ministerial meeting. For his letter, he sent, uh, I don't know if everybody's seen a copy of that to, uh, to the panel. The IAC panel for, as well as IAC in regards to the generation project for the platinum playing program. Uh, to get this ball rolling and make sure there's no hiccups going forward, basically in the letter. To make sure everything stayed on track and let's get this process done, so we can have the development of generation. Then we met with NASDA in regards to the Northern Service Deliveries Association. That's what NASDA is. And, uh, with Phenom and talked about how all those services are being delivered to our communities within the, uh. The, uh, catchment areas of Noma and Phenom. We then, uh, August sixteen, met with Minister Clark, uh, and talked a bit with him. And then, of course, then we started into the AMO conference. Opening remarks, uh, then it talked, then Premier Ford gone on, talked about the economic recovery of Ontario and, uh, the COVID impact it said, you know, went on about that. I didn't follow some programs, Indigenous engagements with, uh, Wendy Landry presented that and a few other people were smoking on that. Housing solutions. Again, we had a presentation to Noma, but I wanted to be more in tune because we're looking at housing solutions. And Marathon work with our, our, uh, industries. Uh, ministries forum, of course, uh, that was, uh, 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 so different with virtual because you, you're tuning in and they're getting questions posed. Similar to a bear pit, but a little bit different. It's actually pretty good. And then, um, blue box rollout, of course, we talked about that, how it impacted Marathon. And the reality is. About eighty-five percent of our waste right now that we recycle goes to landfill sites. It was, it's ridiculous, but that's reality and it's a feel-good process. You put it in the blue box, you put it to the curb and it goes to get some recycling place. But in reality, there's no demand for that product right now. So it's too hard to move and too expensive to move, so it goes to a landfill site. So for everybody out there and anybody out there, do a little research, this is not Rick Dumas talking, Marathon Town Council, this is reality. That we recycle to make it feel good, that we're doing the right thing for our planet, but there's no market for that. The virgin product is still the cheapest way to go. So manufacturers look for the virgin product. Which is, you know, to make water bottles and metal and whatever, it's too expensive to recycle those products, so they look for the virgin product. And they, they sell it to us. What they need to do is charge a hefty fee of deposit on those products. That's the key message that I brought up again, to have those products bought back, whatever it is, milk jug, water bottle, pop bottle, pop can. Uh, you know, wha- whatever, a recycling fee, you'll, you'll bring it back. And then you won't be looking at the virgin products no more. You're looking at recycled products more. Impact, pandemic impact, impact still working. Going to be addressing all of our taxation and our impact of Marathon. Marathon will see a big change, probably with all the increase in their housing cost. So there'll be not so much in your tax base. Uh, your tax, uh, bill at home, but the overall municipality will see a change in, in a shifting. As, uh, Mr. Verbal will attest, there'll be a big shift there based on the numbers going up as the wholesales, even on the airside tracks, they're averaging a. Double of what they were in sixteen when they did the last assessment. Interesting stuff. Uh, broadband funding, as you know, Marathon is well in their way of getting the broadband, uh, enhanced in our community. So. Talked about that, listened to that. Then again, another ministers forum on, this is on August seventeen. Then Noma attended, uh, the NDP delegations and of course. Noma then did attend with the ministers and we do our minister of barefoot again. Uh, to talk about that wrapped up. And then we met with the Liberal, uh, uh, leader. Uh, Stephen Del Duca and Minister, uh, Minister, uh, MPP Gravel, and so used to call him Minister because of so long. He joined us, uh, which we haven't, none of, none of us have seen him for a year or so. So, uh, very interesting. He came in and, uh, and talked. So. It was, uh, it was really good. I found a very good, uh, conference. And, uh, then of course Marathon had its, uh, its three delegations with Minister of Infrastructure. Talked about our water sewer, uh, deficit and infrastructure in our community. Of course, our active living center, the funding model for that. Mr. Skorczynski, go a little more detail if you like with that. Of course, the energy minister, uh, to talk about are the natural gas, compressed natural gas. Uh, that we didn't get funding for. And of course, we met with Minister, the Ministry of Northern Development Mines and Forestry, talked about our. Harbor and of course, again, support for gen mining and, and, uh, you know, uh. I did, Minister Rickford wasn't on the call, but we did, uh, uh, make sure that his party ministry assistant. Uh, would share that information again with him. So he got the message loud and clear. We thanked him very much for the letter. That was what it, uh, there, uh, Mr. Skorczynski, enough of your comments before I ask for questions.
Yeah, I think, uh, the delegations, uh, were a little bit different this year in that, uh, it was all new ministers, uh, because there was a cabinet shuffle. So. Uh, it was a bit refreshing. Uh, we always bring forward solutions when we do our delegation meetings. Um, so, well, two things, one of them was, you know, can we utilize the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund to fund our natural gas project? Um, so I have a meeting set up with the executive director this week to, to start to discuss that. Uh, and then the other proposal that we brought forward that got traction with, uh, the Minister of Infrastructure was. Um, can we develop a, a pilot project? Um, obviously we specifically mentioned ourselves. Um, where instead of applying for thirty-five million dollars for the active living center. Um, is there a way we can develop a program where maybe the province provides operational grants in the form of things like mortgages? So if we borrow the money over a thirty-year term, um, couldn't, no, the province provide us with operational support to pay that mortgage on a yearly basis. Rather than a, a thirty-five million dollar capital outlay. So. The minister was very interested in that idea, uh, certainly one she hadn't heard before. Um, and she's asked us to put that in a briefing note and get it off to her staff in, uh, the next couple of weeks. So. I thought the delegations were a little more productive than traditionally they are this year with the cabinet shuffle.
Great. Thanks for that. Councillor Valance?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, within your discussion with the minister, uh, surrounding generation mining, was there any conversation, uh, with the big? There's no, it's no secret, the region's about to boom in the mining industry, but there's a big shortage of. Uh, employees or people to fill roles. Was there any conversation around that and any type of kind of. Um, information sharing on potentially how the region could overcome that issue or anything from the ministers then?
So I want to say from all my meetings, uh, uh, there's a lot of discussions around, around jobs and availability of jobs and today, not going forward. And the lack of workers. So as we talked a bit off air, pre- previous to the meeting, prior to the meeting. We're, we're in a dilemma, not only in Marathon, but everywhere. We have to figure what the, that, how that looks like. And so, no, not specifically about us in Marathon and the mine, mining, mining opportunities. Because as they say, build it and they will come. We believe, and I think that will happen. But the problem is right now there is not any, there's all, you know, you work in that field, councillor Valance. There's not a lot of trained people out there for the mining sector and the ones who are retiring now. They didn't do that gap fill, you know what I mean? They didn't bring in the young people and train from the old guys or gals. And say, here's what you gotta do. So that's where they're finding a real problem. So they might have to bring some of those old guys and gals back out of retirement to train some young people in the mining world. Because mining world is a lot different than industry in general. You know, it's a, it's a different beast, right? You're underground, you got different structures, different scenarios. So, yeah, I don't know what the answer is. We, we did briefly talk about that in various different meetings with ministers. Talked about the housing, but the housing in their mind right now is a shortage of housing in regards to. The shelters, you know, homelessness and drugs and mental awareness and all that. So the NASDA meetings with ministers was very focused around that. Not so much about workplace workers, because industry will work with municipalities, work with their workers to look for housing solutions. And that's where we're having somewhat discussion with Barrick as well as generations, Mr. Skorczynski and I have had. So. Though, those could be solu- solutions fixed up through that process, but as far as workers, no, not directly. Okay, councillor Lake?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Uh, uh, just, I mean, clearly you've been really busy and, uh, there's lots in there. Uh, one of the things that, uh, certainly I, I keep thinking back to our strategic plan and, and you know, like what are. What are our core kind of missions? Because I know there's just so much on the plate and I do. Uh, was, I'm happy to hear, uh, especially from the CAO that we're, we haven't. Given up on the, uh, active living center, that, uh, that's still a focus for this community. And when you think about as. Councillor Valance said, the, the region's going to boom, uh, more than ever, I think a new facility is probably important. So. I mean, I, I've not heard the mortgaging idea before from anywhere. Uh, so I, you know, I applaud you for trying to get creative and, uh, just. I think that was one of the, uh, you know, we talked about the, the mill site. We talked about the active living center. Uh, as, as two of our core pieces, uh, strategic plans. So I'm happy to see we're still trying to find, uh, some creative ends around for that.
Yeah, you know, and I think Mr. Skorczynski nailed it on the head. We, we always come with some sort of ideals and solutions as projects or pilot programs. And Marathon's been, uh, very successful in the past with those things. We just have to have the government. Consider those as really good business models. Prime example of the Forest Corporation, the Manor. Working on partnerships and looking, give us a little bit of money, we can make things happen with a little bit. We might not need it all, but we can, we can work with things. So let's, let's look at different ideas outside the box. And then they can, they can bring those programs to other communities. Everybody's got to take on some sort of, like, for example, this is our rec center. So I, I would expect that the residents of this community have taken on some load of burden of debt. For the thirty years of, forty years of life of that facility. So that's, you work together with that little bit of debt, little bit of government support, little bit of, uh, you know, grants or subsidies that are out there from industry or whatever. And then we come back with a complete package. So let's look at it that way. And I think with the presentation we did was really good and, uh. And give, and, and it tweaked their interest. And as Mr. Skorczynski said. They're looking for some, some, uh, comments back from us and, uh, let's see what comes out of that. Great, thanks. Okay, new business. Request been received from the town of Cochrane seeking support of their resolution in regards to the PSA test for men. Into medical care and further to copy this motion be forwarded on to the individual listed in the original resis- resolution and move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Valance. Questions? Pretty straightforward. All men should get it done. It's not invasive. And it might protect you and help you if you get cancer of the prostate. So it's a wonderful thing. Don't be afraid, go talk to your doc. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Up next we have a ca- uh, resolution of support from the, uh, community of. Oh, sorry, the township of Huron Kinloss. So pertaining to a domestic production of COVID nineteen vaccine and for that a copy of this motion be forwarded on to individual listed on the original resolution. Same thing, I think the federal government is doing the right thing, pretty straightforward. Councillor Lake, second by councillor Valance, any questions?
Nope.
This is basically to have a facility that, uh, they're well in their way of, uh, supporting to develop, have vaccines built in their backyard, uh, built.
Is, is there not currently a, a plan in place to build them? I thought I read that on.
Yeah, the federal government is supporting, uh, yeah, with Moderna, I believe it is. And, uh, they're supporting that. So this is basically a letter of support saying that, you know, it's a good idea.
It is, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Uh, next one up, the councillor hereby supports the attached reserves to see if the municipality of Saint Charles pertaining to municipal land tax transfer tax and further copies motion be forwarded on to individual listed in originally. Uh, resolution, same thing. We talked about this at the, uh, at the Association of Municipalities. And this is being passed on. So move by councillor Valance, second by councillor Lake. And it's a, uh, same idea, land transfer tax, uh, with municipalities. Any questions? Here in none, call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Kerry, thank you. Uh, next one up, I have a resolution as, uh, as council supports. In regards to the township of Georgian Bay pertaining to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada. And further, a copy of this motion be forwarded on to, in, individual listed on the original resolution and moved by councillor Lake, second by councillor Valance. Questions?
Um, I guess I have one.
Yeah, councillor Lake, sure.
So, uh, I do remember the, the TRC, um, meetings. They're incredibly powerful and, and you sort of followed them. And, you know, with my students, we've actually looked at some of the, the resolutions, but I, I'm actually not. Like, I don't know if I could rhyme off the ninety-four. Like, everything I've read out of the TRC, I've been like, yeah, we should, we should absolutely support that. But I, I, I mean, my only reticence is I actually. I don't know all, like, it's not, I think it's ninety-four or not, something like that. I don't know them all. Um, I, I, and I would certainly support the spirit of the TRC and, and moving forward, but I do. Like, that would be an interesting education piece, I think, for councillors. Um, I don't know if that's something that, uh, you know, we, we had a really, I remember years ago, we had that great. Uh, uh, visit to Bitigon where we kind of learned a little bit about the culture and the history of the area. Um, I think it would be interesting to, to once again, kind of look at some of that, uh. That history and some of the TRC recommendations, uh, especially as it kind of impacts municipalities. So. I, I certainly support the, the, the spirit of the TRC, but I would just claim some ignorance about all ninety-four of the, uh, uh, resolutions.
Okay, Mr. Skorczynski?
Yeah, sir, your worship, uh, there's, uh, I just happen to have this on my desk. I'm not sure if you can see it. So it's the ninety-four calls to action. Um, there is ninety-four. Uh, there's only been seven completed in Canada to date. Uh, so that's really what the, the motion, uh, you know, i- is bringing out forth for. But if you go to the National Centre for Truth and Reconciliation, which is, uh, located at the University of Manitoba, you can download this document with the ninety-four calls to action.
Thank you.
So thanks for that. But I, I think councillor Lake has a good, uh, good point. And you know, it wouldn't hurt for us to, to. Maybe we have a great relationship with Bitigon, but one of our council to council meetings set up an afternoon session. And just go, we'll get into each one of the resolutions and calls for action in one of the ninety-fours, but go over them. In general, and maybe there's some key points out of the, out of this. Uh, you said seven have been addressed. Or looked at, so that other nine, uh, six, uh, eighty-seven haven't. So let's look at that. And maybe even inviting our, our Pick Mulbert friends for an afternoon session would be something of gathering. That relationship building process between the, the three of us. And, and talk about, do, get a, get us, uh, maybe even Mr. Skorczynski can facilitate that afternoon session. Where we could, uh, talk and he can highlight some of those things, because I'm sure he's well into the reading of that book. Mr. Skorczynski?
Yeah, we have done that in the past, your worship. So it, it is a great idea. It's been some time. It was probably, uh, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, where we, we held an afternoon session where we. Uh, we went, it was in this case, we went down to BeakdeGong and we went to the Healing Center and, uh. You know, we, we just had, uh, it wa- it was a good day of joint discussion and we'd had a feast together and, uh, it was a great opportunity. To learn from each other as a First Nation and a municipality. So. Um, I'll certainly reach out to Ms. Bushy down, uh, at BeakdeGong and, uh, we can talk about, uh, looking at something for the fall.
Certainly. And I think the Tur- the Turtle Lodge would be an awesome place to go and do that. And I think with the three councils, if the Pickmore were to join us. Just to talk about it and then just share information. And I know Wendy Landry touched on that as part of her indigenous awareness of the Truth Re- Reconciliation Report. And so with that being said. It's out there and a lot of council members and a lot of council people have never even looked at any of it. So in understanding even our own backyard, the Robin Spirit Treaty, you know, which are, are First Nations neighbors and not signatory to the, uh, to that. So in understanding even our own backyard, the Robin Spirit Treaty, you know, which are our First Nations neighbours and our signatory to the, to that treaty. So understanding that kind of stuff from them, understanding TRC, so that'd be good. So with that being said, maybe Mr. Skrotchinski can work something out and see if there's interest in those two communities getting together. Okay, all question on favor?
Yes. Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, up next, we have the Franco-Ontario Day, which is going to be.
Your worship, you skipped over.
Which one did I miss? Did I get stuck here?
The local.
The local, yeah, the pad for the, yes, sorry. The requests have been received from local youth regarding the installation of a splash pad. Copy to all members. And see, it was a letter I responded to her. And she was requesting, I don't, I'm trying to find where that letter is. Anyway, she, sorry, she. Okay, here it is, sorry. So her name was Sophia Bennett. And Sophia reached out to me in a letter form and asked me through her mother and herself was to look at, she's ten years old. And Marathon is a great place and, you know, there are not a lot of things to do for ten-year-olds, kids her age. It would be nice to be refreshing to have a splash pad area in the town. There are a lot of open spaces and Penlake would be an ideal spot where a splash pad could be built. A splash bag could be used by all kids of all ages, giving a lot more use to and fun to many kids in our community. And she went on to talk about the benefits of a splash pad for kids of her age. And there are many new young families moving to Marathon. As we know, we got a lot of youth coming to the mining sector and they'll be even more. So she would even help raise money, she goes on by saying. And she would sell lemonade and freezies and would even help build it if she had to. I have done some research, which she did supply a lot of, lot of grant opportunities and locations to look for monies. And, and, you know, some other playground grants available in Canada. Here's the website. She went on to say about that. I have shared with you some grants and talked about that. So she's thanking me very much and reading my letter and I did respond to her. And her mother's thanked me for responding, so she's very excited. She might send more letters to us in the future about things she sees. So I talked to Mr. Skrotchinski and we did talk about in the past about this. So there's some opportunities, as you recall. So maybe we can look at something like that in our twenty-two budget. But that's for council discussing, Mr. Skrotchinski to relay back to administration for discussion again. Councillor Valance?
I just want to say, great job, Sophia. That was a very professional letter. The funding sources and the pictures were very great. And yeah, just again, great job and very well-written letter.
Great, thanks. Councillor Lake?
Thanks, your worship. I do, it's actually, it's, you know, it's awesome when you see young folks write in. I remember the skate park really has some of its genesis in kids writing in. So it does have an impact and I think the council is obviously open. I will try to my best councillor Tabushi impression by saying that every time you, you build infrastructure, you have to maintain it. And so that's always the challenge to stretch your workers farther and farther in terms of maintenance. But I do, I, in my head, I can remember having a conversation about a splash pad at Penlake. And I want to say this might have been ten or fifteen years ago. And I just, I'm trying to recall, was it just a money issue that we didn't do it? Or were there other sort of things that stood in the way of that kind of, kind of thing?
Mr. Skrotchinski?
So, your worship, we actually had this in the budget two years ago.
Yep.
And did some research on the cost of it. And at that time, it was obviously, you know, council's decision to remove it due to other priorities. But we'll certainly bring that budget item back, relook at the numbers. I want to say in my, just from my memory, we were looking at about a seventy-five thousand dollar investment. It wasn't something that, you know, was totally out of the realm of possibility. So we'll update those numbers. Obviously, we'll be starting our budget process next month with a full draft to be completed before the end of the year. So we'll flag this to relook at those numbers and complete that research again.
We can get it instead of a line painter, your worship.
Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah. Well, we could also incorporate one of those in the budget. But so, so Sophia did mention Penlake and I think that honestly, in all, in all likelihood, would be the best place. You have the lake there and the lake water is warm enough that you can just utilize a pump system in the lake. We turn the water back to the lake through a design, through a splash pad design. So the kids can go out there and that would also enhance our park and maybe more utilization of the park. Because, and it might even help the water itself, because you're moving the water a lot more. So it might be beneficial to the lake itself as well with more oxygen getting it back in. I don't know. I'm not a biologist, but it makes sense to have more water moving. It makes, makes better. So thanks for that, Sophia. Your, your very inquisitive request is being looked at. And administration will definitely put it into the budget process. We can discuss it in twenty-two. And I encourage all of our youth in our community. And, you know, again, we are leaders, going back to that leadership and bringing solutions with the youth council program. And, you know, one of the few communities have done it and still do it and still encourage our youth to be involved. We brought it to a lot of communities, brought it to AMO, for example, a few years back and presented. And some other communities tried it, but didn't follow through with it. So we are following through and we continue to follow through. So we pat our sauce on the back because we have our youth engaged in our community as best of our ability. So, and we see results like this from time to time. So next up, we have the resolution for the Franco-Ontario Day, which is coming up in September twenty-fifth. And I did respond and I, I think that this year I will be able to attend. I don't think there's any conflict. We canceled our Noma board meeting because we're going to do an in-person meeting in October. So the timing this year is, is I'm free, so I'll be able to attend. So we'll move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Valance, that the town of Marathon now resolve that Mayor Dumas hereby proclaim the day of September twenty-fifth Franco-Ontario Day to join the Franco-Home community of Marathon in celebrating exceptional contribution of Ontario's growth and prosperity. Any questions? And one other thing, update, working with our First Nation neighbours, Bitigon, Nishnabi, they, they supported a town of Marathon and purchased a flagpole. And they're gonna, we're gonna fly every child matters flag at half mask until this whole situation is resolved. So I noticed their staff have, have gotten the dimensions and put in the, the base, I believe, for the pole. So we'll see that upcoming soon. And that's awesome. And the only thing I'd ask administration, even, even though it's on air, I should maybe reached out earlier was our other two flags are starting to get the, the string coming away from the flag, which they normally do. I just noticed that today when I drove by. So maybe we can change them up before the Franco-Ontario Day, just to have new Ontario and Canadian flags. So with that being said, I call a question on favor of this proclamation?
Oui.
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 Oui, oui. Grazie, thank you, grazie. Spanish. Okay. Okay, anything else? We are going to an in-camera meeting following this open public meeting. And we will be discussing. There's my little green sheet here. Personnel matters about identified individual, including municipal local board employees. That'll be directly following this in-camera meeting, in this open public meeting. So I have a motion to adjourn at the hour of four fifty-eight PM. Move by councillor Valance, second by councillor Lake. All in favor?
Yes.
So Louise, are we just staying on here? Are we gonna re-time in, chime in?
Yep, just stay on.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody. Bye.
Good night.